This is for the regular meeting of the city council at eight P M, May twenty fourth. Councilor Wallace is not joined yet. Councilor Z.
I am here.
Councilor Devlin.
Here.
Councilor Khan.
Present.
Councilor Lane is not joined yet. Councilor McCauley.
Here.
Councilor Connell.
Present.
Councilor Shan. Councilor Tantar.
Present.
And Councilor Vogel.
Present.
President Argum.
Here.
Two absent, we have a quorum.
All right, great. I'll keep an eye out for the others in the attendees. Late files.
Councilor Lane just joined, correct? Councilor Lane? Muted.
I'm here.
Thank you. Yes, we have three late files. The first is Communication three thirty, which is the rather massive Code of Ordinances as edited, May two thousand twenty one. We have Communication three twenty seven, which is the Hill Street fence wall at Squires Glen. That's actually a committee item. And Communication three thirty one, which is the new report order for fees that was sent out today, actually, by this office.
Motion to waive the rules and accept.
Second.
Any debate on acceptance? Roll call.
Roll call, accepting the late files, waiving the rules and accepting the late files. Councilor Wallace has still not joined us. Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Councilor Khan.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Connell.
Yes.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Montar.
Yes.
Councilor Vogel.
Yes.
And Councilor Argum.
Yes.
I thought that was a planning board dog.
That's my dog tonight.
Oh, okay. Dueling dogs. Public comment. Let me see if there are any hands up. For those of you who haven't done public comment before, you raise your hand electronically, state your name and your home address, and you get two minutes on anything on the agenda. As long as it's on the agenda, it's fair game. First up, I have June Henderson. Ms. Henderson.
Thank you. I've emailed all of you, so you know my stand on a couple of items. I'm talking about the safety zone. Totally agree with the safety zone being put in down to Merrimack Street. I agree a hundred percent on that. But I do not like the idea of closing down Merrimack Street to smaller lanes. I believe it's going to be more of a problem for the area, and we really don't want to lose the parking. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. I just need your address, your home address.
Four fifty two Merrimack Street.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you. Let's see. Any other hands out there? Getting the globe. Yes. Jane Snow.
Good evening. Jane Snow, Nine Coffin Street. I agree, and I appreciate all the work that's been done by the ballpark. The only thing that bothers me is at one point, the barrels have gotten moved over, and I know that they've said that the design has changed, and I'm not really sure. But I agree that we can't I've had a couple of times where the barrels are way over, and it makes it almost impossible if people are riding on a bicycle, you can't get by them. So I agree with the idea of adding the blinking lights and things and being very careful when the kids are playing ball there. But I am concerned as to where those striping lanes are going to go in, because if they get too far over to the right, those people will never be able to park in front of their homes. And I think it's going to be more of a problem than not when we only have ballgames at certain points. So if we can address that part, I really love and I appreciate all the effort that's been put into that to make it a lot safer than what it has been. The barrels have truly helped slow people down. And again, I do appreciate the steps that we have moving forward, but I'm a little concerned about where the lane lines are going to go. Thanks.
Thanks. Did you state your address? You might have, but I didn't hear.
I'll state again, Nine Coffin Street.
Okay, sorry, I'm spacing out. Okay, any other hands? Not seeing any. Okay, I'd like to go to the mayor's comment then. Let me. Mayor Holliday, are you there?
I am.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Good evening, councilors.
Order that the record show that Councilor Wallace has joined us.
I've got that at eight oh four.
All right, good. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. Lot been going on. You have a lot of information in my update. I will highlight what I have presented to you. What is really important is how well we have done as a community, as a state, in terms of tackling this pandemic. We've only had thirteen cases in the last two weeks, and our positivity rate is at one point nine percent, which is wonderful. And it's because collectively of all we have done in following the state guidelines and getting vaccinated that has really helped us move forward. And this has changed the original target date for full opening from August first to now, May twenty ninth. We are two months ahead of schedule, and what this presents as a challenge to us is all the executive orders that were submitted by the governor and how that impacts what we're doing in our city. So there is a three-page list of executive orders that has been submitted by the Mass Municipal Association to the legislature to begin looking at these issues. Obviously, outdoor dining, hybrid meetings are high on the list for us in Newburyport. I will certainly keep you updated as the legislature moves forward and addresses some of these executive orders, because all of those sunset in sixty days after June fifteenth. So we really do need to continue to be fairly aggressive with the legislature in terms of where we are. The Lower Merrimack Valley Collaborative completed this past weekend. Their clinic on Saturday. They will hold a couple smaller clinics to make sure everyone gets their second doses. But to date, this is pretty amazing. The collaborative administered twenty seven thousand vaccines, and that means that over ninety one percent of the population within the collaborative, aged sixty five and older, have received at one dose. We had a wonderful celebration with all the volunteers on Saturday, presented certificates to them, and I can't thank them enough for the people who have volunteered hours and hours of their time to make sure that this happened. So here we are in Newburyport with seventy four percent of our residents now at least have one vaccine dose, and sixty two percent are fully vaccinated. This is really great news for our city. The capital reserve funding requests, we have submitted those capital requests pulled out of the five-year plan for two thousand twenty-two. We look forward to your review of those requests. And we also included the cost to recover, to repair the concrete wall and complete the fence on Hill Street near Squires Glen. The other new addition to the capital plan was in between the filing of the capital plan and where we are today. The Parks Commission has been out looking and looking for a new home, and they have found one at fifty Parker Street. And I gave you some details in the update about that particular space, and it's conveniently located near the trail. And we would begin funding this through the capital plan for the first year, and then it would become part of the Parks budget as we go forward. We are currently in negotiations with the landlord, Gordon Hall, for the site on fifty Parker Street, so there'll be more information coming and on where we are with this process. We did find out through legal KP law that because this site is ideal with a loading dock, a garage, workspace, and office space, that it falls under thirty B in terms of a uniqueness determination, which means we only have to post it for thirty days in the central register as opposed to actually doing a full RFP, because we have the potential of losing the site if we had to do a full RFP process. So I'm very excited about this site. I will keep you posted as those negotiations move forward. You have Order two five two before you, which is a borrowing request for Phillips Drive, and I don't think I need to say much more on that. You all, I think, are well up to date on where we are. I thank all the councilors who participated in our walkthrough with BSC and meeting with the residents. The wastewater treatment plant, we are approaching substantial completion. The final paving hydro seeding will be completed the end of this week. And we also have received complaints from the neighbors regarding the height of the fence there, and we have reached out to the contractor, and we are trying to get them back on site to lower the fence in response to the neighbors' complaints. I would also like, you'll be getting a formal invitation, but on June ninth at four P M, we are doing a formal ribbon cutting. We have a New Orleans brass band that the Coastal Rails Coalition is providing. There'll be speakers, state dignitaries, and encourage all of you to put that on your calendar now. And as I said, a formal invite will be coming. I am really happy to report that late this afternoon, I received notice that MIBA did approve the certification for the short-term protection on reservation tariffs. And we would like to get this in place in September before the hurricane season, and there will be more information coming on that. And now my task is to work with D C R on funding this project. Merrimack River Dridge Project, we had a little bit of issue with D E P and not G C A, C Z M in terms of extra conditions they placed on the water quality cert. Those had been resolved, and the final report on the two oh four study and environmental assessment has been sent to North Point, which is where the commander will approve for review and approval of where we are. This is an important licensing piece that then ultimately results in a partnership agreement between Newburyport and D C R for moving this forward. Safe routes to school, the final paving and striping was completed earlier this month, and now we're doing a final punch list for that project. So if there's any concerns, Ward Three Councilor or others on that project, please send them to me as soon as possible. Paving starts tomorrow on Merrimack Street from Forester to Broad Street, and it is expected to be completed by Wednesday. And that section of the roadway was milled last week. We've been working with our striping contractor, Markings Inc., who's been repainting, repainting, sorry, cross rocks throughout the city over the last through several weeks. Obviously, they will wait until the paving at Merrimack and High Street is completed before those will be done. There's about a hundred left to complete, and they've been coming out at night. It'll be here Wednesday night and may need to finish next Wednesday. They will be repainting the double yellow lines on our roadways that are there. Happy to report that Five Oaks Construction, finally, for the Columbus Ave Water main replacement. If you recall, the former contractor failed to perform, and we had to pull the contract, rebid it, and that schedule of work and start date will be announced shortly. They're meeting with residents tomorrow. I would like to suggest, because we've had a lot of challenges with the beta paving plan, that we began meeting with individual councilors to talk about where we are with this plan and ensure that projects that are important to you are in the right order in this plan. Matt Kugan and I will be meeting with you to talk about the plan, and then after we get your input and finalize your input into the plan, we hope to do a public meeting at some point later in the month of June. I've been working, as you know, with the C S O Pilot Notification Project with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, the Merrimack River Watershed Council, and Brown and Caldwell, which is the engineering firm that has been developed, that has been hired to develop the C S L notification system. Unfortunately, we haven't had enough significant rain events for direct sampling of the river to validate the sampling with the tool created by Brown and Caldwell. Preliminary data is very promising, and we're hoping to be able to launch this notification system this summer. In terms of just the Human Rights Commission, sent me a formal request to paint a Pride crosswalk in the city. Decision was made to do it in front of City Hall, which seemed to make sense that will be very visible during Pride Month, which is all of June. And we also have a June Juneteenth celebration scheduled for the eighteenth of June. I will send you more information about that. We will also be hosting, finally, after months of training. It's been really difficult to build this D E I team through a remote environment, but we will be hosting community conversations on very specific topics on June eighth, the fifteenth, and the twenty ninth from six to eight P M. I will send you more details about those community conversations. Just a couple more upcoming events. I mentioned about June ninth in terms of the wastewater treatment facility, but we also have on June tenth at three thirty, Minco is doing a ribbon cutting at One Boston Way, and you will receive an invitation to that. And then, as I mentioned, on June eighteenth, the Juneteenth commemoration, and the time, I will send that information to you as soon as I have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the mayor? Questions for the mayor? No questions. Thank you very much, Mayor.
You're very welcome. Have a great meeting.
Okay. All right. Back to the show. Consent agenda.
That consists this evening for the approval of May tenth, two thousand twenty-one minutes. We have a communication, which is three twenty-nine, Statement of Interest, School Building Authority. That's to go to the Education Committee. And we have two transfers, Transfer ninety-seven, which is from three different areas, an amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand four ninety-eight to snow and ice expenses. We have Transfer ninety-eight. Multiple accounts, transfer requests, excuse me, three million seventy-one thousand two capital and reserves, same amount for F Y two thousand twenty-two. Both of those are to be referred to Budget Finance. There are three appointments. Appointment two forty-seven is Brian Burnall, eighty-three Garden Street, Constable for Civil Business until seven one two thousand twenty-four. Appointment two forty-eight, Christopher J. Fay, twenty Strong Street, to the Historical Commission until five thirty-one two thousand twenty-four. Appointment two forty-nine, Joseph Hablon, twenty-two Farrell Street, to the Whittier Regional School Committee until five thirty-one two thousand twenty-four. Following items will remove, are removed from the respective committees with the vote on this consent agenda. Ad-hoc Committee on Economic Development, Communication two sixty-two, the Gas Barre Letter Regarding Awareness, Budget Finance, Ordinance seventy-four, Transfer ninety-six, and Order two forty-seven, Neighborhood and City Services, Communication three twenty-seven, and Public Safety, Order two fifty, and Ordinance seventy-seven. That's the consent agenda this evening.
Thank you. Counselor Shan.
Can you remove, motion to remove Appointment two forty-eight from the consent agenda?
Yes.
That's removed. You don't need a motion. Just. Counselor Z.
I'd like to amend to add a Committee of the Whole to Transfer ninety-eight, please. Which is the three million dollar capital raft.
Budget Finance and Committee of the Whole.
Please.
So noted.
Thank you. And I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Okay, before I do that, Counselor Shan slid your hand up. Are you okay? Any councilors have any? But if anyone has any objection to sending it to Committee of the Whole, all I have to do is say so. We don't need to go through the vote. Any objections? No. Okay. All right, roll call. Counselor Khan.
Excellent. Thank you. So on the consent agenda, Councilor Wallace.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Councilor Khan.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Connell. Councilor Connell. You're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar. Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Argum.
Yes. Great, thank you. Onto the regular agenda. Mayor's update.
Motion to receive and file.
All right. No, Bruce Vogel was first, and Counselor Z was second. All those in favor, say aye. I mean, roll call.
Roll call on the mayor's update. Councilor Wallace.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Councilor Khan.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
And Counselor Argum.
Yes. Communications, I think first is late file three thirty.
It is. That's the Code of Ordinances submitted by Councilor Khan, edited May two thousand twenty-one. I think in the packet, there's only one page. We may have submitted a PDF, which we have. It goes on for quite a volume.
Yes. Sorry.
No, go ahead, Counselor.
Yes, I want to actually motion collectively Communication three thirty and three thirty-one to General Government. They're both related. The other one is an appendix to the Code of Ordinances.
Clerk Jones, tell us about three thirty-one, too.
Three thirty-one is an order that includes all the fees throughout the city, anything referenced in the Code of Ordinances. And the idea, my understanding is, is that will be voted on annually, and it's a pretty straightforward, rather clear way of keeping track of our fees. They've often been done by separate orders, and it's rather confusing.
Okay, do we have a second on Counselor Khan? Okay, all right. So Counselor Khan, please, go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much, Council President. Just to explain a little bit about this and to clarify, I think, a little bit of what was just stated. So the Code of Ordinances that were submitted are based on the the committee that we did to review, the special committee on reviewing the Code of Ordinances. And there was a memo that was sent to General Government at our last meeting. And in that, we talked about the non-substantive changes that were made. We also put in that memo recommendations, and the recommendation from the committee as done in the, kind of like the redlining, or actually the black lining in this case, is that we moved all the fines to the chapter one, which actually talks about chapter, the chapter one that actually talks about fines. And so throughout the whole document, all the fines were moved within the Code of Ordinances to chapter one. The fee schedule was something, I don't know, some of you here on the council have seen us approve fee schedules from the harbor master for the boats and waterways. We also approved fees from the fire department, and those were done as orders. And then we have some fees that were handled through ordinances. So the intention and one of the outcomes of the ordinance review committee was to actually create a fee schedule that would allow all of the fees to be in one collective location. At this time, these are actually right now identified as an appendix. But the intention is to have a conversation in General Government of actually making that a separate document that would not have to go through the monetary aspect of being updated any time any fees are updated. There's something we pay to have it updated at our Code of Ordinances website. However, a lot of other communities have one fee schedule that is annually just approved. It may not have any changes, but it's annually looked at and approved. And the reason this came about is a lot of these fees were from nineteen seventy, nineteen eighty. In one case, there's a fee for two dollars for lodging houses. And unless you have one place to see all of these, it's really hard to understand even if how relevant some of these fees are. Plus, it's not really consistent in where they are. So I look forward to the conversation in General Government, and I hope people support moving these there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Z.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I don't take any exception with moving them. I'm just trying to make sure I understand, is the intent to just have a conversation and bring them out for receiving file and then refile them as formal ordinances? Because they're identified as communications. So I just want to understand how to work on this or prepare against this.
Well, I'm chairing General Government, so just tell you, my intention is that I think we would talk about which of these should be in an ordinance and whether to do one omnibus ordinance or do little pieces and so on like that. But let's hear from the sponsor, too.
Yes, thank you so much, and my apologies. It is a little confusing. And I think part of it is because it's around a three hundred-page Code of Ordinance updates. So the intention is to review it in General Government, talk about these kind of decisions that we came about, go through some of the specific kind of red lines that may have been on the borderline of that non-substantive to substantive. And some of them is outdated, certain sections that are not even relevant anymore, but they may be like four or six different sections that we just may delete. So part of it is to discuss what's the best way to do this in a way that could collectively come before this body and be approved as changes to the ordinances. So I think the initial conversation will start at General Government, and then you guys will have all of this before you, again, more submitted as an approval of changes to the ordinance. It's a little confusing. I think this is kind of the first time. We're supposed to do this on every year that ends with a five or zero, and I think we're just kind of learning on the process, the best way to do this. The one other thing I wanted to add here, too, is that, you know, it's not Committee of the Whole. However, I do think that when we do bring sections before, it would be helpful for everyone to be able to see these changes. I think they're really good changes. It's updating a lot of information. But I think this is the best way to first have that preliminary conversation. Last thing is, our charter actually says that we need to be done by all of this has to be finished by July first. So that's why in General Government, we'll start that preliminary discussion, and then we do need to move somewhat quickly in terms of making these changes, if I'm not misunderstanding our charter. Thank you.
Well, I think we have to act on the report in some way. Doesn't mean we necessarily have to adopt any changes, but the counselor is correct. We have to, it will come back to the full council. It would just seem, I was on the committee, special committee with Chair Khan, unwieldy to expect the committee to write a four hundred-page ordinance, so we didn't do it that way.
That's all I was asking. So when you're ready for whatever changes you actually want, they will come in in a new packet number, and they have an O D N C, and so we can follow them that way. That's it. Thank you very much. I'm all set.
All right, thank you. On the motion to refer to General Government, roll call.
Councilor Wallace.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Councilor Khan.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
And Counselor Argum.
Yes. I think we have Communication three twenty-seven now. I've got, it was a late file.
Three twenty-seven is that, actually, is that not coming out in committee items?
I think it's a late.
I see. It was a late file text, and it will come out in Neighborhood and City Service. Is that correct?
Yes, it's coming out.
I got you. I got you. All right. We don't have any first reading appointments.
Well, actually, we do have Appointment two forty-eight pulled. So that would be Christopher Fay, twenty Strong Street. Mission until five thirty-one two thousand twenty-four.
Recommend moving to planning and development.
Second.
Any debate? Roll call on moving it to planning and development.
Councilor Wallace.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Councilor Khan.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel and Counselor Argum.
Yes. Am I right that we don't have? We don't have any second reading appointments? Can we go to orders?
Hold on for a second. Yes, you're right. So we are now at orders, correct?
Orders. I think we have a confirmatory order to make sure we have our dates right on the council meetings. Is that it?
Yes.
All right, and what was the, it's so June seventh?
Yeah.
Special meeting, the twenty-second is already on.
Yeah, it was June fourteenth on the previous one on May tenth. And I'm sure the intent was June seventh. We had changed the other meeting to May twenty-fourth tonight, but we thought it would be clearer to at least do a confirmatory order to make sure June seventh is the part of the record.
All right, everybody know what we're doing. I need a motion, I guess.
So moved, motion to approve.
Second.
Debate? Roll call.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Augman.
Yes. All right, June seventh it is. Um, order two forty-nine.
Two forty-nine is, uh, submitted by Counselor Z and Devlin. Impertinent part, it, uh, recognizes, uh, Caroline Walsh, this year's Newburyport High, uh, valedictorian. And Dries Fadel, Fadel, excuse me, this year's Newburyport High graduating class salutatorian. Um, whereas the city highly values education as the ultimate investment in our collective futures. Whereas the city's students have worked extremely hard throughout the school year to achieve excellence in all pursuits and deserve recognition for doing so. And whereas the city seeks to recognize the achievement of all of the city students and hard work of all of those who work toward educating our children. Now therefore bear resolved recognition of achievements. City of Newburyport acknowledges and recognizes all students for their hard work and dedication during their studies, extracurricular activities, sports, volunteer work and all other pursuits, especially in light of the challenges presented by COVID nineteen. And sincere congratulations to all students who will receive and award special congratulations to this year's Caroline Walsh, Newburyport High's class of two thousand twenty-one valedictorian. And Dries, Dries Fadil, Newburyport High School's class of two thousand twenty-one salutatorian for their superior academic achievement. Expression of gratitude, the city of Newburyport wishes to extend its gratitude and appreciation to teachers, administrators, staff, coaches and other staff who work toward the education of our children, particularly in light of a school year full of challenges presented by said COVID. Best wishes, the city of Newburyport wishes the entire class of two thousand twenty-one its best as the students move on to their next endeavors and pursuits. Know that the entire city is behind you and proud of you. Collectively, Counselors Zed and Devlin.
Uh, need a motion.
Motion to receive and file, or motion to approve, pardon me.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Z.
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, this has become kind of a cool annual tradition, I think, that we get to do here on the city council. And, uh, despite COVID, I reached out last month to find out who, who the, uh, the students were who had achieved these and was pleased to hear Caroline Walsh and Dries Fadil's name, uh, sent my way. And, um, Caroline was kind enough to send me, uh, her resume and, uh, Counselor Devlin has Dries's and just want to say a few words about them. And I know that they're here in the attendees list as well, and I think, uh, both of them have some family as well. So, uh, Caroline is the valedictorian, which is awesome. And, uh, just, you know, as is common every year, just a huge list of accomplishments. Um, going down, sort of down some of the list here, really impressive stuff on the sports side or extracurricular to start. Uh, of our city indoor track and field for four years, outdoor track and field for four years, uh, ski and soccer across a few different years. Participated as class treasurer, environmental club, anti-defamation league, student ambassador for three years. Uh, so a lot of extracurricular, a lot of community service, serving on the Human Rights Commission as the student representative for four years. A volunteer field scientist at Acadia National Park for, for some time, uh, and then also some other work and some other, uh, community service. Academically, of course, um, as you might expect, National Honor Society, AP Scholar, Harvard Book Award recipient. And, um, quite a few other things, including taking honors chemistry, algebra, German, and a lot of great things. So it's really neat to be able to see this. This was obviously a challenging year. I think everybody would agree and, um, students, I think, were under a lot of pressure and a different situation as were teachers. So it's really nice to just, I think, take a deep breath, take a moment and recognize them. Caroline, let me know that in the fall she'll be attending Tufts University, not too far away, uh, which I'm sure parents appreciate and planning to major in biochemistry. Um, so I'm really, uh, pleased to, to just, uh, sort of on behalf of the council and I, I hope you all agree to, to offer her our congrat- congratulations, pardon me, on this achievement. And, uh, with the president's okay, I'll yield to Counselor Devlin to introduce the salutatorian.
Counselor Devlin, go ahead. Uh, Counselor Khan, are you okay with that? You have your hand up.
Oh, go ahead. You do your introduction.
Uh, yes, I had the good fortune of, I, I think, uh, after five years, Counselor Z does this on purpose because I get the salutatorian. And he likes to hear me mess up and in pronouncing that, but, uh, it's always been my good fortune that, that the people in this position uh, are some fantastic young people. Um, I've actually met Aiman and Nordin Fadil, who are Dries's younger brothers through the, uh, Newburyport Bass Boys Basketball Association. And, uh, I think I probably met the parents through that as well, but, uh, they have three excellent, uh, uh, children, very nice children. I had a good conversation with Dries. Um, he's the salutatorian. He's the president of National Honor Society. And, uh, he was, uh, helped lead the, uh, two thousand eighteen, uh, tra- uh, cross-country and track team to the state championships for the first time in history. Uh, I took a little bit different tact this time. He's heading off to MIT next year and I took a different tact and just asked him what his best educational experience was at Newburyport High School. Um, I, I was going to ask him who his favorite teacher was, but very quick- quickly I learned that, uh, he was probably too political and savvy to answer that question, but in, in his best educational experience, the first, he said, was his, his time on the high school cross-country and, uh, indoor and outdoor track team. Um, he did, did that for four years and, and the thing he said to me was, you learn that you had to show up every day, do what you're supposed to do and do it all for the benefit of the team. And I thought that was a really great message from, from a, from a seventeen, eighteen-year-old kid and, uh, his coaches should be very proud that, that they taught him that. Um, the other thing that he was most proud of was his, he called them his environmental projects. And this is where he did get into some teachers, uh, Ms. Hobbs, who runs the environment, who has a, uh, teaches environmental science classes at the high school. And, uh, she also has a new class, which is field studies for environmental sciences. And, uh, this sounds like, uh, it dovetails with the, the superintendent and the school committee's focus on getting, uh, more hands-on active classes for our juniors and seniors. So it was nice to hear about the, the reaction of that, uh, from one of the, the students had gone through it. He was also very proud of his time on the environmental club. Uh, when I asked him how long the environmental club had been around, he said, oh, certainly more than ten years, which I thought was a testament to the Newburyport school system. And that's run by Ms. Cummings, who, who interestingly enough is the Spanish teacher, um, which I've had some experience with, my younger, my oldest child has some experience with. So that, it's interesting that she's crossing over and also, you, you know, helps run the environmental club. Um, the, uh, National Honor Society actually is in charge of the, uh, composting. So as president of the National Honor Society, composting and recycling at the school, uh, was within, uh, Dries's, uh, area of responsibility. Finally, he was most proud of, uh, his work on something called the Gulf of Maine, which is, uh, organized by John Halloran. Um, it's, it, it takes kids from the area and, and links them up with mentors in the environmental, uh, field. And they work on different projects. For instance, he did a wildlife observation and some, uh, water, uh, testing. And he had something called climate cafes where he met with people and, and introduced them and, and got them involved in the idea behind, uh, climate change and, and, and impacts to the environment. Um, so actually, Dries and, and Caroline, uh, wo- would also like to say a few words and, and, you know, I just certainly can't, can't get over how, how much of a good conversation I have with Dries and I wish him all luck in the future.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Khan.
Oh, thank you, Council President. Um, I guess before we yield and listen to these, um, the two students here, I, I just wanted to see if the sponsors would entertain allowing all of us, um, to be also able to, to add our names to sponsorship. I know we had talked about this when we did the resolutions. I just wanted to ask that of the sponsors. Thank you.
No, no, no objection.
Oh, I was gonna say no.
No. Okay, uh, everybody okay with that? We'll just, we'll just make it all eleven of us, make it a, you know, a longer document. I'm sure the kids will frame this and cherish it for the rest of their lives. So that's it. That's, uh, now let me recognize, uh, men and women of the hour. First I have, uh, Caroline Walsh. Ms. Walsh, go ahead.
Oh, well, thank you so much for inviting us and for recognizing us. Uh, I actually recently spoke about the value of community and, uh, in writing that speech, I reflected on all the ways that Newburyport has supported me as a high school student. Um, and so this is just yet another example of all the community support that I've been so grateful to have all my life. So yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, next, I'll recognize the salutatorian, if I can find. Uh, Dries, go ahead.
Hey, yeah, yeah, thank you. Um, thank you for recognizing the both of us. Um, it's definitely really great to be, um, acknowledged in this way. As well as all the other ways that we are acknowledged as students at Newburyport High School. It definitely means a lot. And so thank you for doing that as, as well as, um, thank you for everything that you do for the city.
Thank you. All right, well, uh, before we vote, I, uh, my, listen, we, this has been a grim year and this is a really positive, fun thing. So I just wanted to give the kids a hand, if you guys don't mind. So, like, congratulations. All right, how about a, how about a vote on? Roll call.
Roll call on this wonderful order two forty-nine. Congratulations to all. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
You did.
Counselor Z, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
And Counselor Augman.
Yes.
Mr. President, if I might, unrelated to this, um, not on the agenda, but in the packet, we do have second reading, uh, for, you would see in the packet. I can recite them. There are four second reading of appointments, uh, inadvertently left off the agenda. So that's why we did not see them.
But they're in the packet?
They were in the packet. May I?
Okay. Uh, yeah, go ahead. Let's go back to those.
Thank you very much. Appointment two forty-two, Katie nine eight Russell Terrace, Human Rights Commission until five thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Appointment two forty-three, Charles Carroll, twenty-five Hill Street, Council on Aging until five thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six. Appointment two forty-four, Richard A. Eaton, four Horton Street, Council on Aging until five thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six. And appointment two forty-five, Barry McBride, five Pine Street, Salisbury, as the Assistant Wiring Inspector until five thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion to approve collectively on second reading.
Second.
Okay. Hey, roll call.
Thank you so much. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Augman.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
All right, so we're, we're caught up, Richard?
We are caught up, yes.
All right, um, order two fifty-two.
Two fifty-two, um, let me just run to it right here. It is, um, the Phillips Drive Loan Order. Let me get to it because I should read it. It's a loan order unless you just want to refer to committee.
Uh, why don't you read the, so the public knows what it is?
Okay.
Just the gist of it.
That, uh, three million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars is appropriated to pay cost of the Phillips Drive Neighborhood Roadway and Drainage Improvement Project, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, to meet this appropriation treasurer, uh, with the approval of the mayor is authorized pursuant to, uh, chapter forty-four, section seven. And, um, the rest is boilerplate. The rest is boilerplate jointly submitted, uh, Counselors Lane and Tontar.
Need a motion?
Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Second. Any discussion? Uh, Counselor, Counselor Z.
I just have a quick question on the way in. Um, I was under the under- understanding that we'd have two bond orders. One was a general bond and one was a, uh, enterprise fund bond. Is, is that, is it all in one now? Just so I know on the way going in, if, if there's anything else coming. Does anybody know the answer?
Sponsors know. Uh, all right.
All right, that's okay. I'll yield. We'll figure out.
No, no, uh, okay. Okay, uh, I think one of the attendees may know something. So Director Manning, please enlighten us.
It will just be this one loan order. Um, so this includes both, both the general fund piece and the water enterprise fund piece. So there will not be a second loan order coming in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Finance Director.
Thank you. Okay, uh, roll call and referral.
Roll call and referring, uh, order two fifty-two to Budget and Finance. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
And Counselor Augman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next.
Order two fifty-three, uh, which is a, um, order submitted by Counselor McCauley that impertinent part says that the crosswalk at the intersection of High and Myrtle Ave will be reinstated under following conditions, approximately forty feet from Myrtle Ave. Uh, there'll be an ADA compliant curb cut and ramp at both ends of said crosswalk and the crosswalk shall be repainted.
Uh, motion to refer to Neighborhood and City Services.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
And Counselor Augman.
Yes. All right, uh, ordinances.
We have a second reading, um, of ordinance seventy-three, which is the ordinance that, um, is, uh, defining the use six thirteen open storage. And it is a short ordinance. It is, was described, uh, last time by Counselor Heather Shan.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Motion to approve second reading ordinance seventy-three, Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
And Counselor Augman.
Yes.
Next item.
Again, a second reading. This is ordinance seventy-five, so-called, uh, Safety Zone, Merrimack Street Ordinance. Certain parts were discussed and read last time. I don't think I need to read them again. Uh, it was, uh, jointly submitted, Counselors Wallace, McCauley and Tontar.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
Second.
Debate. Roll call.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
And Counselor Augman.
Yes.
Motion passes on second reading, ordinance seventy-five.
Ordinance seventy-eight.
Ordinance seventy-eight is, um, also a second reading. It's submitted jointly, Counselor Shan, Tontar and Wallace. It's, uh, with respect to the municipal aggregated community, uh, adding chapter fourteen, a new article, municipal electrical aggregation. And there's a number of subsections to it, um, which again were recited last time.
And we, we amended it on the floor last time, right?
Yeah, uh, the amendments, uh, fairly lengthy. It was a friendly amendment at first, uh, adding section fourteen point ninety-three language and section fourteen point ninety-four language, all in the, uh, Adding Section fourteen point ninety-three language and Section fourteen point ninety-four language, all in the notes.
Okay. All right. Any debate on second reading? Roll call.
Is there a motion? Do you have a motion?
Oh, did I not wait for that? I need a motion.
Motion to approve a second reading.
Second.
You got that?
I have a first and second motion approved. Thank you.
All right. How about a debate? No debate? Roll call.
Roll call on approving second reading ordinance seventy-eight, Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
No.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tantar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Augman. Motion approved is amended, passes eleven yes, one no.
No, ten yes.
Oh, that's right. My math, you know.
All right. All right. We got one more. Ordinance seventy-nine. This is a new one.
This is a new one. It's on plumbing and gas fees, amending Section five, one eleven and five, one twelve. Essentially raising them. And the only point of note is that new is a reinspection fee for forty-five dollars on both gas and it's submitted by Council Tantar.
Okay. Can I get a motion on this one?
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Uh, any comment? Don't feel obligated. Roll call.
Roll call to refer to Budget and Finance, Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tantar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
And Counselor Augman.
Yes.
Thank you. Are we clear to committee items?
We are clear to go to committee items.
Okay. Motion to receive and file communication two sixty-two, Gas Borrow Letter.
Second.
Any debate? Roll call.
receiving and filing communication two sixty-two, Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tantar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
And Counselor Augman.
Yes. Thank you. Nothing further from that committee. Ad hoc committee on Market Landing Park. Again, we're just anxiously awaiting some drawings back from Sasaki. So nothing has been submitted yet. As soon as it is, it will go public. Budget and Finance Chair Z.
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to approve ordinance seventy-four, ordinance to amend salary of elected officials.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. So the committee report is the committee met on this at our most recent meeting. We had a discussion about this. The sponsor proposes to modify council salaries to increase counselor salary from a sum of five thousand to a sum of nine thousand and the council president from six thousand to eleven thousand. The sponsor presented arguments. If I may summarize, the primary argument being that really the, the rate of pay has not changed since I believe it was nineteen ninety-five was mentioned and that in real terms essentially the, that, that essentially equates to a reduction in purchasing power, so to say, or so basically the, the money is worth less as time goes forward. And if this should pass, it would take effect in January of two thousand twenty-two, which is, which corresponds with our charter, which indicates that, you know, changing the ordinance can't take effect during the same term. The, the council, the committee had two present and we voted to send it out without recommendation. Although it seemed clear that there was, it was, it would have been one to one and just out of deference to get it out of committee. It comes to you with no recommendation. I will speak on the matter, but I'll, I'll yield for the moment if, if I, if the sponsor perhaps wants to add more, if there's more to state. But the, so that's it, two to zero with, with a recommendate, with no recommendation coming to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Other counselors. Counselor Tantar.
Yeah, thank you. The, the Ward War Council is, is correct. What I did submit evidence behalf of the council president, who's also a sponsor of this and myself. We, we, you know, we noted the change in the CPI since nineteen ninety-five. So five thousand dollars in nineteen ninety-five is the equivalent of two thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars today. We also presented comparables to other communities on the North Shore. And also we did a calculation of what council salaries would be if the sum of all council salaries were to equal the mayor's salary, which is, which is another measurement. I also looked at the academic literature on this question and mostly because I enjoy saying his name. The, the lead scholar on this is, is a political science professor, the University of Missouri by the name of Peveril Squire. Peveril Squire. And overall Squire has found that more seats go uncontested when legislative pay is lower. Higher pay allows lawmakers to spend more time on their legislative responsibilities. And higher salaries are more likely to attract lawmakers who hold college degrees. And, and that's a, that's a finding that is repeated in a number of different studies. The main fear is that poorly paid legislatures will become the province of the wealthy and the retired, according to Professor Squire. That, that last one hit sort of close to home. But, but that passed. Professor Malhotra, Professor PoliScience Stanford noted, it's really irrational. We don't want to equip politicians with the resources to do their jobs. And then we blame them when things don't work the way we want. When pay is low, he said, you're encouraging wealthy ideologues to run for office. So what I want to note is the literature is pretty strong. The studies are pretty strong, concluding that there is a positive relationship between higher legislative pay and, and more people running for office. The, the question as to whether or not that leads to an improvement in the operation is a little more difficult one to, to determine, mostly because the definition of what an improved legislative body would make up. Usually they, they use a the, the metric they use is, 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 you know, college degree and, and how many college degrees and, and in one story of the EC, it was the, they did a rank ordering of the quality of the institutions. But, but the results on that one is dubious. My argument, rather than just looking at numbers, but my argument is here in Newburyport. You know, we have not found ward races to be very competitive for a while, for a long while. School committee, you know, we haven't, we changed their salaries. Also not particularly competitive. And I think one of the factors might be council salary. And, you know, given the deterioration council salaries due to, due to inflation. I think it's time to increase it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Khan is next.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I, I wasn't able to attend to the Budget and Finance meeting, so I, I just wanted to weigh in on this. I did listen to the meeting, which was really helpful to understand, you know, people's thought process here. I, I did want to say that this is something I've been hearing a lot about on some of the Massachusetts Municipal Association conversations and at their recent annual conference. And a lot of it comes down to policy impact and, and the political kind of landscape. And as we kind of look at, at the legislative body that we are and each voice and perspective brought to the table in legislating. Oftentimes you're struck by the, the type of people that are able to do this job. And, and I, you know, now after almost completing four years, it's a lot of work. And, you know, don't ask me now after doing those court of ordinances for three hundred and sixty-five pages, but, you know, who, who has the time? Aside if they're doing regular job as well to sit and do that type of work. And, and really I am fortunate enough from my own perspective to be comfortable to, to volunteer my time to do this work. But we all know the number of hours we put in. But as I've been trying to talk to other people to get them to consider this, this role and bringing the different types of perspectives and backgrounds they may, they may have. Many of them are saying, well, I, I need the compensation to give that time, you know, either they're a single parent working several jobs or they, they don't have the luxury to just sit and do the hours that this work takes. And, and it's good work. I, I really do enjoy it, but I also recognize that I am at a different place in terms of my perspective. And I do want to see other perspectives come into this, into this, you know, this table. I, you know, I want to put another seat right next to me and make sure every person is in a position to do the job we do. And that's why I do support this. I think this is, granted, it's not enough to justify the number of hours we all put in. But it is something, it's a start. And I think it could really create something that will get more people considering to even run for these positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Back to Counselor Z.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just speaking for myself now, not as a committee report, but I, I rise, so to say, in strong opposition to this proposed ordinance. I did lay out a couple of my feelings during committee, but just to expand upon them briefly. First of all, I, I think that some of the studies and evidence provided may be sort of flying at forty thousand feet. I'm looking here in Newburyport in my personal experiences as a counselor and as counselor, the at-large counselor who spoke before me mentioned in speaking to others. For me, the, the, one of the most interesting things is those I've spoken to about considering running for council from all walks of life. The first question I get is not how much money does it pay, but how much time does it take? What is the commitment to being a city counselor? And it's a tough conversation to have. And I think everybody on this Zoom call who's a counselor would probably agree that it, it is, it's a ton of work and whether one is given a five thousand dollars of compensation or nine thousand dollars of compensation as is proposed, neither of those are going to compensate anybody for the, for the literal raw hours that they put in. So I'm, I'm sort of, it's an interesting argument to hear that we're going to open the field up further by, by providing nine thousand dollars instead of five thousand dollars. It's also an interesting perspective to hear that somehow having a college degree is important to being a legislator. If the idea is to have all voices, then maybe having a college degree isn't something that's requisite and that we want to welcome anybody and everybody who's willing to run and put in the time. So I'm, I'm a little bit mystified by those comments. Just speaking for myself again, one of my challenges as a counselor again is not the money, it's the time. And I find that that actually breaks down more on age divide than it does anything else. Those of us who have young kids and have careers and so forth, as was mentioned. It is a challenge to be as has been for the past year or in my time, many years, sitting in meetings all across the city, three nights a week on average, if not four nights a week. And then as a ward counselor dealing with potholes and other constituent calls that my, my ward colleagues can attest to. I don't think that this is a step in the right direction. I think that this will actually, you know, produce poorer results for Newburyport. Again, maybe there are studies that show at a global level or at a federal level or a state level, there are different experiences. But my experience in Newburyport is that what the council really needs is a tune up in terms of the time commitment. In terms of bringing down the amount of time that counselors have to spend in a way, in a way that will allow more people with lots of different responsibilities, whether it's family, whether it's taking care of a family member, whether it is a job or a career to be able to run. So that, that's my personal deeply held belief. I also sort of bristle at the concept of calling it a salary. I, I look at it more as a stipend or an honorarium in a sense. It is public service. It's something that at least I do in part as a service to my community. And I look at the money as a way to compensate for expenses that one may incur because certainly we don't want to inhibit anybody from running because they'd have to go out of pocket. And so the expenses I'm referring to would be things like driving around to meet constituents, dry cleaning, things along those lines. And in my humble opinion, even in today's dollars, five thousand dollars just does reasonably cover expenses that a city counselor would, would encounter on an annual basis. So I will be opposing this. I opposed it going into committee because I felt strongly about it and I wanted to explain my reasoning. And what I really think that, that we need to work on if we really are serious about attracting more candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Devlin is next.
Yes, I stand in opposition to this matter, measure as well. And I do so under the banner of civic virtue, what is generally described as the willingness of citizens, ordinary citizens to contribute to the common welfare of their community, even at, or against their individual interests. And under which philosophical umbrella, the volunteer elected municipal body has prevailed in you know, the United States and particularly New England for, for years. I disagree with the underlying assumptions that some counselors have given, that a higher salary will attract more people and a different a different group of people, you know, first, I, I don't have any idea of the economic positions of any of you and you don't know mine. In getting to know some of the people who I've run against in the past three campaigns. It's my opinion that we've had a wide variety of candidates from different economic demographics, including a female welder. Who in my opinion brought a unique perspective to the race and should have been elected. I didn't see too much campaign literature from those people that were competing against her saying that, but or, you know, are talking about the benefits of, of her perspective. But I think, you know, maybe a greater barrier to running for some people with less economic means. I mean, some people in the last counselor race spent more than our salary or stipend and, and more than what's being proposed right now on their races. You know, this increase isn't enough to have the desired effect that's been stated here. And, and you know, it's not going to be enough to have somebody be able to run who, who works two or three jobs. And, and because of that, that argument fails. Third, I, I take exception. The vast majority of municipalities I, that I've been to, I've been to more municipalities in the probably two thirds of them have similar comparable, you know, salary levels for the elected officials in our positions. And I've witnessed firsthand the competent oversight of these communities regardless of, of the economic status of that community. You know, finally, the real work of our city happens at the level of our boards and committees, which could not function without, you know, a strong group of civic minded volunteers. And, and this, the, the assumptions underlying this leaves us down the slippery slope of making all those positions paid as well, which we just don't have the money for. I think a vote for this actually harms those who come after us. You know, it's a confirming act for those cynical people who call us politicians with derision and you, everyone like us as greedy and self-serving rather than virtuous. To me, this wipes out the significant example. We and all the civic leaders before us. Think about all those people who have sat in our chairs at city council chambers and signed with pride the inside of their drawers, of our drawers when the, when their, when their terms were up. Those people set, and we set examples by running for city council. And more importantly, during the middle of the pandemic, we cut the second half year of our salaries in a shared sacrifice with the community. These are all examples of the idea that to be a good citizen requires all of us to sacrifice some of our time, money, family activities and comfort to participate in governance. A friend of mine who's also an elected official called me a martyr when I told him my stance, you know, basically the above, what I just discussed. I said, only in these cynical times when someone is trying to do the right thing can they be chastised for it. We didn't run for the compensation package. Nobody here. Or the many sometimes deafening accolades we, we routinely receive from residents and fellow elected officials. We all ran because we believe it is our civic duty to contribute our time and skills to the city's government. And no matter what the individual cost, I ask you to consider this and then consider what it means for the future when you make your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next is Counselor Connell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll, I'll try to be brief. Consistent with what I've said in the past, I'm going to support this. I think it was well presented by the sponsor. I believe that this is long overdue. As believed Counselor O'Brien, when he was president for years. And, and for many reasons, and we can discuss them, people either choose to run or choose not to. Let me point something out though. In my tenure on the council, I have previously served with a landscaper. An hourly wage earner in the form of a carpenter. A salesman in a paint store. a salesman in a paint store. And all of them left at one point or another. And in two of those instances, I had conversations with them saying, you know, thanking them for their service and expressing my disappointment that they were not going to run for reelection. And you know, in both those conversations, they said, look, I just can't afford to spend this much time for this little. And and what it, what it made me think of was, yeah, it's not a huge amount of money, Counselor. My counselor colleague at large was correct. It's not the primary motive for anyone. But if it has the effect of, on the margins, urging someone to run, who might not have considered it, I think it's short money. We run the risk of being an echo chamber of of similar philosophy, similar background, similar economic standing, relatively speaking. I really value the diversity that our council has had in the past and and and, you know, to to a large degree, we have now, you know, we have merchants, we have attorneys, we have retirees, we have engineers, three of them as a matter of fact, and all female. So I think to the extent that we can expand the range of diversity and diverse voices on this council, we will be better for it, and so will our city. I'm going to vote in favor, and I urge you to do the same.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCauley.
Thank you, Council President. I was the other member of budget and finance who showed up, and and I'm the one who suggested we make a motion to get this out for the council to debate as well. You know, I I want to thank the sponsoring counselors for compiling the information, but just a a couple of things that I go back and forth on as well. I I'm not a fan of comparing salaries from surrounding communities. I think that that has proven itself to lead to a salary arms race, to see who can get a little bit more than the the next guy. But we do need to recognize the time commitments here. Let's face it, this is a poorly paid second job. We we, I don't need a study to tell me that fair pay brings out more candidates, and they should come out because there there are other circumstances that weren't around five, ten, twenty years ago. There are single parents who have childcare expenses. There are people who do work a second job for one reason or another, could be to pad their retirement or whatever the case may be. But they do need to be paid for that, for that time and effort along the way. I I don't think I'm paid fairly for the time that I I spend doing homework and constituent service and all that. And to that, so what? To my point. Because I do it because I am giving back to the community. I'm trying to give back to the community. And I try to take this as public service, and I do take this as an honorarium because there is no way that you could, that that we could right-size the pay scale going forward. I'm going to vote for this. Why? Because it's a small amount of money in the scheme of things. It it does get us probably more in line with the binding power of nineteen ninety-five. And you you know what? If 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 one or two or three candidates come out in the time they have left, and they cite that, you know, they could do it because they might be able to get their Uber ride home from a council meeting, or they can cover childcare, whatever the case may be, right? We should do it. We do it for all the other departments. Just because it's us, I don't think we should look the other way. So I I'm a yes, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Counselor. Next is Counselor Shan.
I would just want to say ditto to my fellow Ward Five Counselor. Thank you very much. That was as eloquent as it gets. I also just want to repeat what our former Council President O'Brien used to say, which is where some of the council salaries should equal the mayor's. And this is, this new ordinance is basically stating that. So I am going to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Other counselors. Counselor Tantar.
Yeah, thank you. Just quickly, a point of clarification. The study I cited that used college degrees, that was not, that was not an advocacy by me or the author that, you know, we should seek out a council with people with college degrees. It was rarely an illustration of the difficulty of measuring whether or not higher salaries result in a better quality council legislative performance. So how do you measure the quality of performance? What the statisticians did in the European Community Study is they used college degree as a proxy for performance. To be clear, if I did that study, I would not use college degree as a proxy for performance, although I do recognize the difficulty of getting a measurable metric in order to undertake that study. Unmistakably, higher salaries lead to more contested races. Whether or not that leads to a better quality performance is extremely difficult to answer in a statistical analysis. I just wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any final words on the debate? Roll call.
Okay, this is the roll call on council salaries ordinance seventy-four, motion approved. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Muted.
Counselor Z.
Sorry about that. That's a no?
Counselor Devlin.
No.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor San.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Nine yes, two no, motion passes.
Thank you. Chair Z.
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to approve transfer ninety-six, budget contingency to salary, police officers, police officer overtime accreditation and longevity.
Second.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So this is a transfer in the amount of seventeen eight hundred, seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and change. It goes to the purpose of effectuating a new three-year contract with the Police Supervisors Union, not the Patrolman's Union, but the Supervisors Union. It is a retroactive one, it is retroactive one year, pardon me, so it actually would go back to July of two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one to twenty-two to twenty-three. There are funds available to transfer for this purpose because we maintain a contingency, as you know, for these types of events when a collective bargaining agreement closes. And the the four different lines that it goes to are basically needed in order to to effectuate the terms of the contract. As we also know now, approving this transfer would essentially approve the entire contract. So so here are some of the highlights of the contract. It is a two-two-two contract, so two percent cost of living increase each year for the three years, again, retroactive. The seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars and change, or let's just call it twenty K on on a rounding, is effectively what the annual impact, budget impact would be expected for this. There weren't huge or massive changes to the contract, but there were some that were notable and worth mentioning. Number one is the addition of a little bit more to the clothing allowance. One thousand dollars is the max, and then there's a, there's a provision to go a little bit higher than that, but when you go beyond the thousand dollars, then there's a requirement for approval for that. The second thing that was important was that historically, this contract has always provided for an increased or enhanced pay if if the if the supervisor, police supervisor, which is lieutenants and sergeants, earn a higher degree. And that continues and remains, and you see that chart. What's different, different is that used to be limited to certain fields of study, and this contract expands the fields of study that would be eligible. So it would include sociology, psychology, counseling, communications, leadership, business administration, and so that's a little bit of an expansion, whereas in the past, it would have been limited to only higher degrees in the criminal justice realm. And let's see, was there anything else to mention? There was some clarification of the arbitration language that came in by recommendation of KP Law. Again, this was a completed negotiation. It is a one-year retro. It was approved by committee by a vote of two to zero and comes to you with that recommendation to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Other counselors? I just have a question. So the the seventeen thousand dollars is for the whole current fiscal year, so you go back to July one twenty twenty, and then that'll, that means we'll be fully funded in this line item till June thirty?
Correct. The seventeen thousand, it basically covers the retro, so it goes back to July of twenty twenty and then would cover through June thirtieth. And then next year, this is already built into the budget that we are currently basically examining for approval next month for FY twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure. Counselor Connell, go ahead.
A very quick question of the chair. I hope you know this answer, but you may not. I think Mr. Coogan is probably watching. How many individuals does this affect?
I do not know the answer to that, the exact number of individuals. This is a supervisor only, so it's sergeants and lieutenants, but I don't know the exact number of folks. If if Matt could give me.
Yeah, Chief Coogan, you have that?
Yeah, sure. It's five sergeants and two lieutenants.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, everyone know what we're doing, and again, because this is collective bargaining agreement, if you accept this monetary measure, it's good for three years. Everyone understand? Roll call.
Roll call on moving to approve transfer ninety-six. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Okay.
Last item, Mr. President, is motion to approve order two forty-seven, which is the establishment of a health insurance stabilization reserve fund.
Second.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So this item comes at the recommendation of the administration via Finance Director Ethan Manning. The recommendation here is to establish this health insurance stabilization fund. Counselors are probably familiar today with a multitude of stabilization funds we have, but effectively it's it's a way to put money aside for a specific purpose. You can't create a stabilization fund for anything and everything, but there are certain provisions within state law that allow for the creation of certain types of stabilization funds, and a health insurance stabilization fund is one of them. The the reason that this is timely now is that, and we talked a little bit about this during our budget hearing, but there is a COVID holiday from health insurance where we expect to get a premium rebate as a result of lower utilization. As much as we wish it would go on forever, the rebate, it is anticipated to be a one-time, one-time sort of thing, and you know, the the concern or fear is that come next year, when the next fiscal year budget is done, that some of the increases that we would normally see with health insurance will all catch up with us. So it is the Finance Directors and the Administration's position that we should fund this health insurance stabilization reserve fund with about half of what that premium rebate is and and then be able to use that to buffer next year, next year in particulars, you know, increases. Now, with that being said, the stabilization fund is durable. You could use it beyond that, but in in communication with the Finance Director during committee, we really don't expect to have lots of other opportunities to to put money into this. The last two things I want to say are that creation of the stabilization fund and funding of the stabilization fund are two different things. What's before you right now is just a vote to establish the fund. And then when it comes time to put money into it, the council would have another opportunity to vote on that. In fact, in the proposed FY twenty-two budget, which we're currently in the midst of, there is a proposal to transfer into here, so that would be one part and parcel with the with the vote on the budget, which could potentially fund this. We absolutely can create this and not fund it with anything, and it can sit empty. And the very last thing is we did ask if we can ever fold or terminate a stabilization fund and transfer the money back into the general fund. And the answer was yes, you can. And so then the following question was, well, then why isn't it the same essentially as free cash? And the answer is there's a little bit more of a strong, stronger tie here to what the intent was. And the intent here is is to use it for health insurance. So while you could let it fall to free cash and then do a transfer, this sort of puts some, imputes some intent into it and makes it clear. It comes to you with a vote of two to zero with a recommendation to approve.
Thank you. Other counselors wish to debate? Roll call.
Motion to approve order two forty-seven. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
We're good.
And just finally, Mr. President, just to continue on the budget workshops, we've completed three so far. Wednesday, we have our fourth workshop. It's public safety, so fire, police, health, animal control and so forth. Thursday, just as a reminder, is now planning and development group, which is planning and development department, building and parks. And I'll I'll talk more about our meeting on Wednesday during Good of the Order, but just wanted to remind everybody, Wednesday and Thursday, we have our budget hearings this week. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chair Z. Chair Khan, education.
Yes, thank you, Council President. So we do have a education committee meeting on June seventh, which I I know we have our city council meeting, but we do meet at five thirty. School committee meets at six thirty, so I still plan on having a five thirty meeting, so my apologies to my colleagues on the Education Committee. We do have what we sent tonight, the MSBA statement of interest that we'll talk about. Any other agenda items, please send to me so I could post. So I know one of the things from our last meeting we talked about is the strategic plan that the school committee is working on, and we did ask that at our next meeting that we get a little bit more insight into the different working groups that get established and and it was one of those things we want to be a little bit ahead of in terms of understanding and and talking through them a little bit more in detail. So I encourage folks to participate if they're interested, and that one will be, my apologies, we did meet in person last time, and I think it was some confusing for those from the public who wanted to participate. I do think, given that we have a city council meeting, we will also probably do a Zoom meeting that night. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. General Government, I now have the the report from the special committees you heard at the beginning of the evening, and I'll set a meeting for that. I'll try to be respectful, of course, of the budget workshops, so you know, we're very, this is a busy time of the year for us. Licenses and permits. Chair Devlin, you have anything?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Chair Connell, Neighborhood and City Service.
Yes. Communication two thirty-four, which was late filed tonight. I'd like to move this along if we can tonight. Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Chair, was that Communication three twenty-seven?
Is this the Hale, the Hale Street thing?
I'm sorry, I I I aired. Yes, it was.
Okay, okay. All right. So yeah, that's a motion is to.
I read the wrong line, yes.
That's all right. Motion to approve. Okay, that's been seconded. You got that, Richard?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Got it.
I I'm sorry, I'm lost. What are we talking about?
It's just a communication, though, isn't it?
Communication. That's what I'm lost about.
It was a late file. It's Communication three twenty-seven, with respect to Hale Street at Squires Glen, and it was submitted jointly by NCS Committee, Counselors Connell, McCauley and Wallace.
But is it a motion to approve or receive and file?
Approve, I believe.
Motion to approve.
Okay. All right, we have a a motion and a section, a second. So essentially, what I'm going to rule as chair is, I mean, it's like, it's like a resolution. We'll treat it like that. Go ahead, Chair Connell.
Thank you, Mr. President, and and I hope I can clarify this members who are scratching their heads. I don't blame you. We briefly discussed this at a previous meeting, and the intention of this letter, this memo, which was very ably drafted by Counselor McCauley, was to express the support of counselors for a relatively modest bit of work at the intersection of Hale Street and Squires Glen. There's a sidewalk there, a retaining wall and a fence, which previously had been a decorative fence, particularly for the last hundred and ten, hundred and five, hundred and ten feet. It's been replaced by black chain link fence for most of the distance, but the last which had been decorative segment was just orange snow fencing, which looks quite frankly like hell. which had been decorative segment was just orange snow fencing, which looks quite frankly like hell. The neighbors complaining about this pointed out to both Council McCauley and to myself and separate communications, their desire to see something put there. And in the early discussions said, let's just extend the black chain link fence. It's a safety issue. Kids can fall down into the ditch, the swale next to it, which is deteriorating. By the time we had a neighborhood meeting, they had all agreed that having a decorative fence in that in the entrance to their neighborhood was advisable. The money is relatively insignificant. But the impact on on that neighborhood seems to be quite quite important. And a part of this memo, if you take a look at it, is to ask the administration and it'll have to be done on a contract basis. They don't have someone in DPS who can do the masonry work to repair the the retaining wall there, the masonry retaining wall. And then to finish the last about a hundred and ten feet with the kind of decorative, either wrought iron or aluminum fence that is similar to what was, if not identical, similar to what was there previously and kind of frame the entrance into their neighborhood. So we thought if we sent the administration a message from the council that we think this is a good idea, it will help move them in that direction.
Okay. Before I go to, uh, thank you, councillor, before I go to councillor Z, just to clarify for the public and the other councillors, when ruling that this would be akin to a resolution if it's approved, please focus on the very last paragraph of the communication, which reads, request the administration prioritize the repairs to the cement structure and the installation of the architectural fence, comma, to allocate funds for these actions from the operational maintenance budget, comma, and to target completion prior to October thirty first, twenty twenty one. So that's it. It's just that one sentence. And it doesn't, it would not bind us, I believe, on appropriations. It's just a resolution urging the
Correct.
Administration. Councillor Z is next.
So I just a couple of questions. So first is, is there an emergency on this or since we're we're, this is just coming in, right?
No.
No?
If if I might, Mr. President, it was a late file because it was did not.
Dated five ten.
The Wednesday deadline. And it came out of committee on Thursday night, I think. So.
Okay.
It's a late file, even though in the committee already.
All right. All right. So that's fine then. And then second question is, can the administration respond? Are we going to do this? Can we do this? I mean, I I must ride my bike past this like five or six times a week and it's just been orange fence forever. I don't know if if.
I I hear you. Chief Coogan, you want to respond?
Yes, thank you. I think the the public meeting that was held by the councillors was very helpful in getting clarity from the neighborhood as far as next steps. And as the mayor mentioned in her in her update, I included in that 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 the fiscal twenty two capital funding request is a line item for Hale Street improvements. And within that one line item, there is funding that would be dedicated towards making the masonry repairs to the concrete wall and installing the decorative fence, which we estimate, which DPS estimates to be about twenty five thousand dollars for the both 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 aspects of the project.
Thank you. Okay. Any other councillor have a question, comment? Okay. Councillor Tantar, please, go ahead.
I'm just going to quickly note that that it's it's a hundred thousand dollars is allocated toward toward Hill Street safety repairs. Just to note, so this already was a success.
Well, I I I'm sorry, now I'm confused. I'll I'll break out my CIP, but so the twenty five is part of the one hundred, Councillor McCauley or?
Yeah, so, uh, thank you all. So Hale Street has a number of items on it. And what was submitted by the administration tonight was a hundred thousand dollars, seventy five thousand of it would go to an engineering study between Route ninety five and the business park, Squires Glen, where there is no sidewalk or any place for pedestrians to be. Incorporated in that was but now bundled, this estimated twenty five thousand dollars for fixing of the the wall, the sidewalk, the wall and the replacement of the fence. So that that came in tonight.
Okay. Let me go back to Chief Coogan. Chief Coogan, so I want to make sure I have this straight. So I'm looking at the CIP. It says Hill Street sidewalk pedestrian access, seventy five thousand dollars for this fiscal year. Is is this deck, is the decorative fence and the culvert in there?
It was not included in the CIP request, but it is is as councillor McCauley mentioned, is bundled into the appropriation request.
The big one for three million dollars that came in tonight?
Yep, that's that's correct. And just to clarify, it's the seventy five thousand dollars is for survey. Survey of the of the the layout of Hale Street to do to do some of those improvements that councillor McCauley mentioned.
Okay, okay, I got you. All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Back to the council, councillor Connell.
Thank you. I I I hope folks are not looking at this as a Trojan horse to get the larger expenditure nudged away and nudged down the road a bit for the 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 full modifications for pedestrian and and cycling access on Hale Street. It is not. This is a discreet request based on neighborhood issues that are both safety related and aesthetic related. And I just wanted to express, because I didn't express this earlier, that the committee voted three to nothing to support this particular resolution, this particular memo.
Thank you. Further discussion on with a de facto resolution to approve this sentence. Roll call.
Roll call on communication three twenty seven, Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Dublin.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tanta.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
And councillor Ragman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, anything else, Chair Connell from your.
No, nothing else tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chair. Chair Shan, Planning and Development.
Nothing coming out. I do want to remind folks, we do have a joint meeting next Wednesday night with the planning board on ordinance of seventy six, which is the seventeen page zoning cleanup that we brought into committee a few weeks ago. So.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry. Yeah, I think it's Wednesday the second, right?
It's going to be at seven o'clock, so we'll conflict with part of the budget budget workshop, so.
Make sure I have. Right, seven o'clock. Okay. Chair McCauley, Public Safety.
Great. Order two fifty, motion to approve.
Tell us about it.
Great, thank you. In your packet was a number of PDFs at the end, which was a plan to stripe Merrimack Street. It went from all the way down from the Rotary, all the way down to Ashland Street. And what it basically does is it puts the center line in the center of the road. It creates two eleven foot travel lanes going each way and creates a a five foot path on the sides that does vary from point to point along the way. It travels down through various streets. It gets to Molton Street where we had just approved a safety zone all the way down to Plummer, which passes the Pioneer League Park. Within that area, it slightly varies. The travel lanes, the center line will accommodate two ten and a half foot travel lanes and the shoulders will remain at five feet. There'll be an additional carb out on one, one in in front of one property prior to the Pioneer League Park for travel lanes. It will just be marked off. In future years, it would accommodate a sidewalk, but it would be marked off for sightlines. This this striping would continue down past Pioneer League Park. The spots in front of Pioneer League Park would be angled at a forty five degree situation so that they could accommodate more more easily and more visibility when they pull out. They'd be pulling out onto the five foot shoulder as opposed to directly into the traveling. As part of that, the the bushes have been trimmed and will be trimmed up to six feet. And this goes by the clubhouse, past the second section of Merrimack Street, which is in front of the playground. It accommodates a in in this, in these particular area, two distinct and additional sidewalks. It adds an additional sidewalk across Plummer Street and then continues after Plummer Ave, all the way down to Ashland, with retaining the eleven foot travel lanes line, center line in the middle and five foot shoulders going all the way down. And that's that's about it without sharing the plans that I can accommodate.
Other councillors. I just have one question. So, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, councillor Wallace.
Sure. Yeah, I councillor McCauley or councillor for Ward five summarized it very well. The reason that we've been reviewing this and, you know, gone back and forth is that this we should be doing this with our roadway projects. This has been a really cooperative experience. I give our city engineer, John Eric White, a lot of credit. He also got it reviewed by the traffic engineer, Beta. It's been through committee. Talked to the Pioneer League with the residents and, you know, it it's it's a good compromise for everything. I know some areas are tight, as some of the a couple of the commenters said, and that's true. They are tight, but but that's what we have to work with, you know, that it that area has always been tight. It's just got a couple of feet, excuse me, less tight when they did the workout here. So but I I think, you know, there may have been a reason for this coming in as as an official order. And perhaps councillor McCauley or councillor Ragman would want to elaborate on that. But I think, you know, it's the city council is involved with the streets and it benefits the residents when the city councillors can kind of act as that liaison between the designers and the people who are out there. So all in all, this was was a really positive experience, kind of fast tracked. It's it's not the final final solution out there, but for what we need it for, I I think you know, we we have, you know, the best design we can do. So thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, no, the the question I was going to ask before I go to councillor Vogel is whether the city engineer had drawn this up and I I gather the answer is yes. So the drawings that we have in our packet were from the city engineer. Okay.
Yeah. So they were city engineer and reviewed by Beta and then back through public comment.
Okay. And then I can I can help on the citations to the city code when we get there. But let's hear from councillor Vogel. He was waiting. Councillor Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, my hat goes off to both the Ward four and the Ward five councillors for the work that they have done. And as expressed by the Ward four councillor, I I think that there was a tremendous amount of of work and and listening that went on. I I I voted, I I stand in favor of this striping. I I do have to express the concern that was expressed earlier on in public comment about the parking and 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 just the effect on the on the neighborhood and on the street as as expressed by by the speaker again at at public comment. And I I just don't want that to get lost in in the shuffle. I I I strongly believe in the safety zone. And I just, as we go and stripe and as been alluded, there's some more changes coming to the to the to the park. We hope as things go on, if there is need for for change, I hope that we are as respectful of perhaps changing or making modifications as we were respectful to the to the whole effort to getting here. And so I just speak that on behalf of of the residents along the street. But I do honor all of the work that was done by both those councillors and and I I will continue to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Back to councillor McCauley.
So I I want to thank the at large councillor. He was part of the process as well. I think this is, we're hoping that this process going forward where we have a plan, we have a design, we engage the public, we change the 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 design and the plan to accommodate those folks. We can't please everyone. You know, for example, on Merrimack Street, there is parking on Merrimack Street. But we had to put fog lines somewhere and not everybody fits. And so the police are aware of this. They were part of it. But again, I I it it's the process at this point that I think that we should focus on that, having a a city a a plan designed by the city engineer and reviewed by the council, who has ultimate responsibility to the constituents, is a very positive outcome. I found it positive. We didn't hold up the process. We we were able to scramble and get this done within two two meetings on the city council. So we can be as efficient as the plan is effective when it comes in. So thank you, councillor, for opening the door on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Z.
I just wanted to ask a few questions. So one is on on one of the plan pages, it says relocate fence two feet, provide walking access behind trees. Is that funded? Is that is that going to be done? Or is that just a suggestion? That's on page looks like page three of four on the top sort of part of that.
Yeah, I do. That's that's not part of the striping plan. That's part of the park plan as well. We we somehow got a little bit. We had some, we had some crosstalk here, right? So as councillor Wallace had alluded to, where we're trying to rewire the car while the headlights stay on, right? And so we need a striping plan to go in the ground for safety of the kids that are there now. And then working with the Parks Department, they ultimately want to move that playground. And that's where the fence would be. And no, it's not funded, which is why it hasn't been done right as of yet.
Okay, so so that actually leads to my second question, which is, is this striping durable for for when the lower Atkinson plan happens, whenever it happens, does it does it, does it work with it? So you don't have to do, okay, so that's that. And then the third question I have is on that same page, the crosswalk that goes across to the corner of the the where the last space is, why doesn't it go all the way to the other side? Or is that just an artifact on the image? It says twelve foot wide crosswalk and then you see these dash lines indicating the crosswalk and then it sort of stops halfway through the through the car parked. Is that supposed to go all the way across the street?
Yeah, that was just bad cut and paste.
Okay, so it it should go. All right. Okay. I'm all set for, oh, actually, no, sorry, one last question. So on the parking thing, which I know is is going to be an ordinance seventy seven, but these shoulders are wide enough to park on. And the debate is, when do you let people park in them? Is that correct? So it's not a physical constraint. It's it's a question of policy constraint.
Well, it's a little bit of both. It's a little bit of both, right? So a five foot shoulder is is technically not wide enough to park. um, a car, right? You, you'd probably want a little bit more space, uh, along the way to have an official spot. But on the other hand, um, um, you know, we're, we're trying to keep the traffic in the travel lanes and create buffers for sightlines and kids, uh, that are moving around in that area. So, um, our, our answer was, there is parking on Merrimack Street, except, um, during game days, which is the next conversation.
So what, what, were the, were the, the, the sides always five feet?
Not always.
They were smaller, right? They were like?
The, the, the sides were whatever was on the ground at the time. Some had eight-to-ten-foot sides, some had sixteen-inch sides. Uh, the center line didn't get out in the center. Um, and the shoulder varied depending on how the road went. Uh, this brings some standardization back to as much of Merrimack Street as we could.
Got it. Okay, I'm all set. Thank you.
Uh, did, uh, Sponsor Wallace, did you, something you wanna directly answer or?
Yeah, sure. Just with regards to the shoulders, there were no painted shoulders anywhere on Merrimack, um, before. So that was, that's one thing that's different all the way from the roundabout, uh, to Forrester. Now, I don't know what's gonna happen in that next stretch of Merrimack, and that's starting to get paved tomorrow, so that may come back to us. But the reason be, if you start driving around and looking at roads, you're gonna start seeing these white shoulder lines or fog lines everywhere now. So, um, it's just, uh, it's a safer way to keep the lane. You know, when people drive at night, they can see better. Also narrows up the lane, so it's a bit of a traffic calming. And it does provide that shoulder. Now, five-feet shoulder is the width of, um, a standard bike lane. But we're not calling these bike lanes. One, because it would cost more money. Two, because there might be some more infrastructure we would have to put in place. And three, if it's a bike lane, you technically cannot park in there by state law, I believe now. But as a shoulder, it still gives you the space for it to do whatever you want. So people like to run in the road, but it still allows people to park on the street. And not that a lot of people park on Merrimack Street, but they do. Sometimes they might have extra visitors or if they have it worked on on their house. So we'll talk about this next, but we didn't wanna take away the availability of parking for residents. You know, if it's a car here, there, there's not a big deal. But when you have the games and you've got that, that onslaught of cars where nobody can see anything.
Well, that, that, we'll talk about that next. It's my own fault because I, I was confused. So Counselor McCauley is sponsoring this plan, then you're sponsoring the parking. The no-parking on game days, that's gonna be the next item. So let's not get into that now.
Okay. But anyways, you, you can't, let me just finish, that you, you can park in the shoulders. It will not be, it will not be regulated. Nothing will be restricted, and that's common on, on many roads.
All right, thank you. Counselor Tantar?
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, the, the last time we visited this, uh, I, I was, um, Ward Four Counselor, and, uh, I brought it to T-SAC, uh, the effort to slow traffic down around the Pioneer, uh, League Park. At the time, uh, Wayne Emerald, uh, suggested, uh, that clearly the, 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 the best solution was hardscaping, uh, bump outs and, and, and traffic lights and that sort of thing. And the, you know, the estimated cost at the time was about half a million dollars. That wasn't deemed, uh, uh, acceptable. So, so a, at the time, uh, he suggested in T-SAC, uh, a second best solution, uh, what, which was to, um, paint, uh, parking spaces across the street on the north side of Merrimack as a traffic calming, uh, technique. Uh, he was arguing, I mean, you know, sort of the order is hardscaping. Secondly, put as many cars in the street as you can. It narrows the street, so it slows it down. And, and so that's why it, you, you had those, you had those parking spaces delineated, uh, across, um, from the park. Uh, and also because neighbors across from the park had been, um, complaining that, uh, people, uh, attending the games and bringing their children there were parking too close to their driveways, and it was difficult to get out, uh, and difficult to get a good sightline. I, I think th- there are a couple of things that, uh, game changes. Uh, one is, uh, there have been some incidents during games of, uh, of, um, you know, the kid, uh, children who have players who have, uh, gotten into tr- uh, trouble, uh, on, on the north side with the parking there. And secondly, uh, for me, uh, designating this as a safety zone with, uh, appropriate, uh, signaling and, and markings, uh, slows the traffic down to twenty miles an hour, and that's a game changer for me. Uh, so I think, uh, doing away with those parking spaces delineated, um, is, is not gonna create, uh, an unsafe situation. That, along with the striping, uh, which is, i- i- as you've seen around the high school, is much more visible. Uh, and I, I mean, I think the hope is, the striping plus the safety zone will slow traffic down enough, uh, to make this, uh, safer, and it'll actually be more safe because the children don't have to cross the street. So I support this, um, hundred percent.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, other councilors wish to comment or to base? Uh, seeing none, let's have a vote on the order.
Motion, uh, to approve Order Two-Fifty. Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Dublin?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Ackerman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Chair McCauley, next.
Uh, Ordinance, uh, Seventy-seven, a motion to approve.
Second. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chair. Uh, on Merrimack Street in the safety zone, basically from, uh, Plummer Ave to Molton Street, uh, during, uh, game times, field events, uh, whatever they may be, there'd be no parking on the north side of, uh, Merrimack Street. Uh, we think that, um, uh, that will just, i- is yet another layer of the conversation we've just had. Um, the language of the north side and during game times, uh, has been validated by the parking clerk and, and, uh, suggested edits thereof to make it easier, uh, to enforce as well as to educate, uh, allow the, uh, parking attendants to help educate, um, uh, most people parking, uh, et cetera. And so, um, uh, we think it's, uh, it, it came out three to zero in committee as yet another, uh, layer of, um, uh, safety during game times. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vogel?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, if I may direct it to, uh, Mr. President, rather, if I may direct it to the Chair. Did, uh, my recollection, uh, during the, um, committee meeting was that we were going to use the terminology "field events", and it looks like we didn't, um, we didn't continue that down to the, um, southerly side. You, we left that as, uh, uh, game times. We had a, we, we were concerned about exactly, you know, when are game times and what are? And, and we thought that field events, I think we kiddingly joked about a circus, but, um, use of, use of that area for other than just games. Did we, did we miss that, or did I miss something? Mister, Mister Chair?
Chair McCauley?
Yeah, so in the, um, actually in the, um, ordinance, it says "field events".
Not on the southerly side.
Well, it says, "please, please note". No, it, above. It says both.
Right, the, the northern, the northerly side says "field events", the southerly side says, um, "game times". Is that Scrivener's error? I thought they were supposed to be game.
Yeah. Um, so it is field events. It is a Scrivener's error. I will, um, uh, I, I will take that, uh, on. It should, uh, but it should, um, uh, during field events. It was, uh, my error in, um, not catching game times twice.
Thank you very much.
Scrivener's error. Thank you for catching that.
All right, Clerk Jones, you got that?
I do.
Okay, Counselor Z.
So actually, it, it's a good, good segue to my question, which is that, um, I, I don't, I don't know what a field event is. I, I can appreciate that it's better than game times, but the question is, you know, what is, so it, it to write somebody a citation for parking illegally? I, I, I don't know. Maybe this question is to Clerk Jones. You know, what, what is a field event? Let's say that, um, the Parks Commission, um, allows, um, a yoga class to occur in Atkinson Common at six AM one day. Is that a field event that would preclude parking? I'm asking from a legal perspective, because feel, I don't know that field events is defined anywhere in Unicode. So I, I think you're just, you, you know, I think anybody could contest a ticket and frankly get out of it. So maybe, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe, maybe Clerk Jones or the President, if you would, if you would like to.
If I might, Mr. President, um, I did meet with parking, uh, and the parking supervisor about it. And we struggled with field events versus games. And, uh, they felt it would have been, it's clearer for them and less controversial. Everyone appeals a ticket, right? But at least, uh, keeping it to a minimum, that there's a game, meaning that if someone goes down and plays ball with one of their children, instead of field event, they're on the field. Yeah, but there's no game. And, uh, it's more to the point, when they're games, you have a lot more traffic, and that's when you have the parking issue. So they felt games was, um, more manageable in terms of writing a ticket, an enforceable ticket, than field events. But to, to the sponsor, Counselor McCauley, uh, it, it could, I'm just making this as a, not that I have the standing, make a friendly suggestion, but that instead of field events, you could say game times on both Merrimack Street, North and South, as opposed to, in other words, I thought it was going to be changed to game times on both, and maybe the Scrivener's error is, um...
Okay, all right, let, I, let's sort it out. And I, I do think, uh, the concept that's being lost here is pre-scheduled. Uh, because, you know, again, a couple of kids playing a game or having a field event, that's not what we're after. We're after something that's pre-scheduled. But the sponsor in this case is Counselor Wallace. Why don't you go ahead, Counselor Wallace?
Thank you, Counselor Ackerman. Um, yeah, during the committee meeting, I, yeah, field never came into play. I may have had that in the original text. Um, but in the meeting, we, we said game, no, we originally thought no parking for games or events. That's what we came up with. But I know that, um, Clerk Jones had liked the idea of the games. So, um, I think field is out. That was my understanding. But I, I defer to Clerk Jones on, you know, how it's best enforced. But it, yeah, it's just so that there's not all those cars in one spot during one time. And, um, you know, as long as it, it makes sense.
Okay, let's go back to, um, well, Counselor Connell hasn't spoken yet, and then I'll stake around back to Counselor Vogel and Z. Counselor Connell, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I guess, um, we're scratching our heads over this, and I don't wanna add complication, but, uh, what happens for something such as the opening ceremony? There's not a scheduled game, but there's a big crowd for that sort of thing. How, how does that fit into the, the definitions that are being discussed?
What does the sponsor have in mind?
Yeah, I mean, that would be games or events. I don't, they don't do the opening ceremonies anymore because there were too many cars. Um, but yes, that would be an event, cuz some, there are, you know, some things that happen there. So, um, you know, for field use, most people just park in the lot because there's, you know, there's fifty spaces out there. It's just those really big events or games that have the issue.
Okay, uh, let me go back to Counselor Vogel.
Right, thank you, Mr. President. Um, to the, uh, Ward Four, Four Counselor's point, um, right, we, we did discuss this. And, uh, uh, if you're just, if you're just down there, just using the field, um, then, right, it, 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 it's not a game time. I think that the President hit on it, and I think that that struck a, um, a chord with me. What I was wrestling with when we were talking about this in committee was scheduled game times. I, are, are scheduled events. I think that, that might help. I just, I wasn't comfortable with just this blanket, no parking. May, uh, maybe it was field events at the time. I can't remember now, I'm completely confused. But I like the idea of, of scheduled events or, um, so forth, because that, that way people can use the parking and not, not worry about it when there's not very many cars there. But what we were trying to address was when there were a lot of cars there. So I'll leave it at that. Maybe we could use the word "scheduled events". That might help. Cause I, I, I'll offer that up.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, is that a motion?
Sure.
All right, so a motion to amend, uh, to insert the word "scheduled".
Scheduled game times, I think. Is it, what do we wanna do?
Scheduled game times at, uh, Lower Atkinson Fields. Can we do that? Scheduled game times at Lower Atkinson Fields. I know it's getting late, everyone.
Yeah.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Counselor Z, did you wanna debate on this one before we move on?
Well, I think, I, I think my comments are germane to the, to the amendment as they are to the underlying, which is that, you know, when you write something like this, I, I believe that people are owed some sort of predictability. So if you write something like this, they should be able to go online and see what the schedule is. So to me, you'd need to tie this back to whatever the Parks Commission, uh, permits to, to happen. You can't just say game times. That just doesn't tie back to anything. You know, when we do events, like we close State Street for Cruising the Fifties, we have a process, we have a vote, we show everybody, we know the date, and we say we're restricting parking for this time. Or even when, you know, the parking clerk uses his authority to do a temporary parking order, he, he gives it a date certain, he gives you a reason and says, you know, through five-twenty-five, you can't park here. So I don't know how to do that on the fly in terms of the language. I understand the intent. But I, I think a resident would, would reasonably need, and, and I think for the enforceability and for the parking, not get killed on every appeal, you need to be able to say, well, look, in, in, uh, in November, Parks Commission met, and they permitted, uh, Pioneer Fe- League to use the fields Monday through Thursday from, I don't know, March first to June thirtieth, from this time to this time. And those are the events during which no parking is, is in effect. So I don't know if we can just work this out on the floor, if there's just, you know, now that we have the striping and they can move forward on that. Doesn't seem like the striping changes based on this passage. What changes is the installation of some signs. So I don't know if the late hour suggests to us that we should think about this.
Well, I, again, I, I do wanna be efficient, cuz we gotta move on to budget and all kinds of other stuff at our next meetings. And, you know, so, um, we do have a permit process under, with the Parks Commission. It's already codified, Section eleven-dash-five. So you, you could, you could just change this to reference Section eleven-dash-five or mention the Parks Commission, and you're covered. I agree with you on the scheduling, by the way. The Pioneer League does post their schedule, but our Parks Commission should too. You're right. What do you guys wanna do? We could, we could table this, we could take it up on the seventh, we could keep going. What do you wanna do? Sponsors? Uh, how about the sponsors of the amendment? So that would be, uh, Counselor Vogel and, and Khan seconded it. How, what do you wanna do?
Yeah, I, 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 I can, I can happily withdraw that, or we can continue. I totally agree. I think that s- scheduled events is, makes a tough, I think, or scheduled games. I think that's why we went back and forth between events and games. And I, I would defer to the clerk to try to figure this out. I mean, how do you wanna do it? How do you want to not allow people to park there when there are events or games? How does that, how do you do that? And, you know?
Uh, Counselor Wallace, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, just a question for the clerk. The language that, or, or for anybody, the language that we have in the ordinance, does that need to match the sign? I mean, we could decide on the intent and whatnot, and then decide on the sign later. Does that work?
If I may, Mr. President, the,
Go ahead.
It wouldn't be the first time that the signs are slightly different than the ordinance. And, and I, I just wanted to insert this, that, um, I think the, it's, the conversation's great. I do like the idea of scheduled, um, games or events. But remember where it says, uh, "no parking during school, while school is in session"? My point is that it's very hard to be that tight. Common sense is used on parking enforcement, believe it or not. And they'll be able to figure it out with scheduled games and times. I really think that. I really think so. And, uh, I'll stop there.
Yeah, I, I, I do think, again, I wanna get this done. This is, I think, our last voting item of the night. So, um, the difference, though, is no one really goes in large numbers to a school, but you could have an impromptu ballgame. So if I may, I think if we could just change the amendment to reference, uh, uh, Parks Commission permit, that's it. Just, just those words, Parks Commission permit. If, if Clerk Jones, you could do something, and then, you know, we can vote on it, it'll pass or not.
This evening, you're talking about?
Yeah, tonight. Let's, let's get it done.
Well, so let me suggest some language then. Well, so let me suggest some language then. So for both.
Can I, can I comment, Mr. President?
Can we what?
May I comment my?
Oh, yeah, I didn't see your hand. Yeah, go for it.
Thank you. First of all, you, you, what, what is the rush to get this done today? Like, you, you don't even know the intersection between the parks permitting process and the Pioneer League. I, I don't even know if they actually give the Pioneer League a permit. I was involved in Pioneer League for a number of years, and I'm not even sure they know when their games are scheduled. Their, their games don't come out, they, they, the schedule doesn't come out until probably April of each year. And I don't think that gets run through the Parks Department. These are baseball fields. Nobody else is using them for anything else. So I, I think you just have to, you have to put this over. This is a, this is a.
Okay, all right, give me a motion.
Motion to table.
No, you don't mean table. You mean, you mean continue it.
All right, motion to continue to the next, to the next city council meeting.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, debate on the motion to continue to June 7th, Counselor Lane.
Yeah, if, if we table this or, or continue it, I'm sorry. You know, my concern is just getting some paint down on the streets. So is this further delay that from happening?
No, this is just the parking regulation.
Okay.
All right, everyone clear on table?
Who want to get the language correct?
Yeah, I, I got you, but, but
Notice to the.
The Pioneer League does have to get a permit by as a matter of law. Okay.
What that process is, and we don't.
Roll call.
You're speaking from the, the, the presidency. If I can finish, we don't, you don't know what that process is. I was involved in Pioneer League, and I don't know what that process is.
So I did write the ordinance requiring a permit in the last few years.
You know how that.
They're not getting a permit. They're a violation.
Ordinance, it's, am I debating with the President right now, or do?
I think you are. I think we have a motion on the floor.
Because, do you know how that practice hap, how that it has, what practical effect that has? Give a motion to amend then. But let's move on.
The motion is, the motion is continue it to June 7th.
It is. It's not precise, and it doesn't give notice to the public about what they are doing and when they're doing it. And it's got to be.
Motion is, the motion is before the council to continue it. We're not voting on it tonight.
If, if I might, I'm going to just do a roll call on the motion to continue to June 7th. Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Augman, thank you.
Yes. Is there anything else, Chair McCauley?
No, thank you very much tonight.
Okay. Chair Tontar, Public Utilities.
Nothing tonight.
All right. Chair Vogel rules.
Nothing tonight.
Okay, good of the order. Counselor Z.
Yes, Mr. President, I just wanted to let counselors know that Budget and Finance on Wednesday will be trying a hybrid meeting for the first time. Just to fill in a few details, the, the mayor's office and the mayor did purchase an owl, which is something that the school committee has been using. But we, we purchased a nicer, newer model, and Clerk Jones and I spent an hour last week doing a trial, and I know he had spent some more time prior to me joining him trying it out. And really, the main obstacle that we encountered last week was that for some reason, the Wi-Fi wasn't working terribly great at the senior center. Supposedly, that has been resolved. So we're going to give it a try. It is a hybrid, which means nobody has to come if they don't want to. I will be there, but the Zoom link is there. So if you're, if you're not interested or comfortable, you're welcome to attend remotely. And the intent is both to, to do that, to, to do it as a hybrid and hopefully prove out the technology and, and a process so that we, we can ultimately implement that at the council level in the near future. It is only for Wednesday at this time. Thursday, they're going to be having another clinic there, and rather than compete for space, even though I, I was, I was under the impression they were done with clinics over there, they're going to do two more Thursday and Friday. So this is only for Wednesday of this week. Thursday would be back to all remote, and then next week, depending and pending on Wednesday, probably do more hybrid for the remaining budget workshops. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And that's, that's how we'll proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Connell's next.
Yes, President, thank you. I would just like to point out that an appalling and cowardly vandalism that took place on a Black Lives Matter sign hung on church property at the Unitarian Church took place. And I would like to encourage my colleagues to attend the reinstallation of that banner, regardless of anybody's feelings about the message itself, the fact that someone's speech, an institution's speech has been so, so dramatically violated is unacceptable in this community, and I, I urge you to join us and support the church's right to express itself when the banner is hung again this week.
And that's tomorrow at 5?
At 5 o'clock, yes.
Tomorrow at 5. All right, thank you. Counselor Tontar?
Yes, thank you. I, I wanted to recognize two Newburyport High School students, Jackson Darling and Nicholas Forestall. Thanks to the council president who forwarded an invitation from John Elwell to attend the tree walk at the Indian Hill Reservoir. I attended last Saturday. It, it was really, really a spectacular event. And the two students were, answered questions. They were passionate about the, the project that they had undertaken. And it, it really is something. I, I urge everyone to get out there. You can walk it. There are 16 signs. I learned a lot about trees. The favorite tree is the eastern white pine, and they, they provided reasons for that. And their least favorite tree is the Norway maple, which is, of course, extremely invasive. So again, Jackson Darling, Nicholas Forestall, job very well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Shan?
Two for me. One, since the mayor did bring up the DEI Alliance, I thought it was a good time to sort of give folks an update on what we've been doing these last six months. So just so folks know, the, the alliance is made up of 24 folks. It's a key community leaders, and I had the opportunity to be the representative from the council. We've had some fantastic kids from the schools as well, and then we've had people who are just interested in being part of the committee. We've been meeting bi-monthly, I mean, every other week. And I guess the best way to describe what we've been doing is getting comfortable, being uncomfortable, having really difficult conversations and being respectful of each other. But it's been a really interesting journey. We had the opportunity to have Michael Eaton. He was a consultant from Culture 7 who's helped us get through some of these more emotionally charged conversations about race and equity in the community. We've been working on a SWOT analysis, which is where we've had the opportunity to sort of define where our strengths and weaknesses are in the community. And it's giving us an opportunity to formulate the strategic plan going forward for what we're going to do next. We've also had the opportunity to have Essential Partners. This is the consulting group that Superintendent Gallagher brought into the schools over the last few years, and they've been helping facilitate a lot of our discussions. We had the luxury of having them help us with the Just Mercy Community Read, which was, you know, if you've had the opportunity to read it, you would know how difficult that is, especially if you're someone from Alabama. So that was a, a good one, tough one for me. But as the mayor stated, the next phase is coming up, and we've got three community conversations happening in the next month. Essential Partners will be part of the, will be facilitating those reads, and the goal is to start bringing in more community leaders into this conversation. So I hope to see some of you all in these conversations, and those are going to revolve around race and symbols and DEI work that we need to be doing in Newburyport in the coming months and years. So I look forward to seeing you in those conversations. And my other one was, I hope folks have the opportunity to look at the front page of the paper today. So I have a shout out to Andy Egmont and NYS, because the Big Wheel 500 in Cushing Park on Saturday morning was probably one of the most adorable things I've seen in a while, where you had two, three, and four-year-olds racing around Cushing on big wheels. It was the best. So it was the first opportunity NYS has had in a year to have an outdoor event with folks participating, and it was, it was a great time. So shout out to Andy and the NYS team, and that's it for me.
Thank you, Counselor. On the DEI Alliance, are you, are you doing meetings by Zoom that the public can participate in, or what's the?
Not, so come, the conversations we're having in June, those will be open to the public. That's where we're going to start bringing in. No, not in person. Right now, they're going to be Zoom. Hopefully, if, if things get better, we'll have, we'll have the opportunity to actually see each other in person. I mean, the Alliance hasn't even had a chance to meet people. So it's been Zoom the whole time.
Thank you. All right, how about a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin? Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Augman?
Yes, thanks very much, everybody. Good night.